We'll not be with you all in July, as that is when I will be attending the IEA Leadership Conference. So my messages will just be submitted in writing for July. And as always, in closing, thank you all for everything that you do and have a great rest of your evening.
Thanks, Ted. Committee updates, I'm not sure who else had committee meetings, I'll start with Erin.
Nothing from me.
Nothing.
Craig?
Nothing.
Anybody from the committee? Ah, Chris.
I got something, we had a special CAC meeting in order to address our subject area leadership teams. That was predominantly part of our discussion because we wanted to get those up and rolling for next year. We determined that we would have three teams this upcoming year, math and ELA, which are anticipated to be permanent teams. And then the last one will be social studies because we are in the process of integrating the new Illinois social study standards into our program. So that is going to be one of the salt teams next year. And we outlined how they will meet, or how often they will meet and how each team will be comprised. And we're working out the details on how they will actually function, so.
Awesome, thanks.
But they are in the process and hopefully will be up and running come fall.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is our consent agenda, which is our opportunity to approve a number of routine business items, all in one vote. All the details of each item in the consent agenda is included in the board book. So Mr. Pierce, if you would take us through that consent agenda?
Absolutely, 5.1 and 5.2 is the approval of the May 24th, 2022, regular and closed session meeting minutes. 5.3 is our monthly personnel report. 5.4 is the authorization of our monthly payroll and bills. 5.5 destruction of our closed session recordings from December 7th of 2020. 5.6 designation of authorized depositories. 5.7 is the certification of hazardous bus routes. 5.8 is the approval of our insurance benefit contract renewals. 5.9 is the approval of our contract for Cisco Smart Net/Flex. 5.10 approval of our Microsoft volume license renewal. 5.11 approval of the contract for email security services. And 5.12 is the authorization of our intergovernmental agreement for our cooperative boys and girls swimming and diving teams. And then finally, 5.13 is the approval of the consent agenda.
Are there any items for clarification or removal from the consent agenda? All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Meissen, second by Locke, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved as presented. The next item on our list are reports, and I'm going to hand that over to Dr. Hitchens.
Right, and I will hand it over to Tony unless you have questions about the FOIA request for this month or the treasures reports. Budget.
All right.
I said, but we could talk budget.
One of my favorite topics, the upcoming budget for the 2023 fiscal year. This is the preliminary budget, so it is our first pass at the budgets, our first look at what our revenues and expenditures might look like in the upcoming school year. In terms of the approval process, you'll see the preliminary budget here this month. Next month, we will post what is called a tentative budget on display for the community to see, and the board will adopt it. In August, we will hold public hearings on the budget for, also for the inter-fund transfers that are included as part of the budget. And this year, what's different about our budget is that we'll hold what's called a truth in taxation hearing. It's atypical for us, we don't typically do it because we do not usually anticipate a levy that is 5% more than our prior year. But unfortunately, this year, with inflation being as it is, our levy will in fact be more than 5%. And so we have to comply with the law, we will have to hold a truth in taxation hearing along with our budget hearing. They don't necessarily have to coincide with one another, but I figured since we're adopting the budget, it basically makes certain assumptions about what the levy is going to be or what the board expects the levy is going to be. We may as well do them at the same time, just to get them out of the way. We do anticipate, though, that we'd adopt that levy in November or December, as we're required to statutorily by law. After those hearings are conducted in August, we would adopt the final budget in September, at the regular meeting in September. So that's the process. Overall, this budget, given our first look, we anticipate a surplus of $1.5 million, although $600,000 of that surplus are in non-operating funds. And it is for either debt service or capital projects, which, just based on the timing of when we've been receiving federal relief money or ESRA money, we're able to book a surplus in the capital projects fund. So that surplus looks better than it really is in actuality. Overall, our revenues are increasing by 0.6%, which is good, given what we're facing, but our expenditures are increasing 3%. So the growth of our expenditures is significantly outpacing our revenues. That does cause concern, so we have been enjoying surpluses for the last several years. Our financial condition has significantly improved, but our expenditures are growing at a faster rate than our revenues, and we will need to be cautious in future years. On a side note, which is also included in this preliminary report, staffing is increasing in terms of its, relative to its enrollment. We're going from about a 8.1 ratio of students to staff to a 7.7 ratio, which is excellent. And on average, that will have positive influences on class sizes across the district. Not that there won't be class size issues, of course, but on average, those class sizes are improving. And significantly, that's a pretty big difference from year to year. Perhaps, I would say, venture to say, the best ratio we've ever had in the history of our school district. But we will have to be careful of that moving forward, as I mentioned, those expenditures increasing and enrollments continuing to decrease in future years, so we will have to be cautious. Again, I add that this is the first pass at the preliminary budget. It will change in the coming months, as it certainly already has, and so those numbers are certainly subject to change too. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
All right, well, we'll be talking about this for the next however many months, three months, four months. So the next item on our agenda is building our future together.
Yeah, so building our future together. And so here we are, after many, many years of discussions on this particular topic. And we're reaching a point where the Board of Education has a decision to make. And so we've offered here an outline for a conversation for the board this evening, and this is a conversation for the board, of the board, by the board. And so this is just an outline of that conversation, and you are certainly able to take it in any direction that you may want to, but we just thought that this was logical in terms of, at least the concepts that should be addressed in this conversation. So first and foremost, the review of the process and history. I know you've been hearing this for a long time. And, but in many cases, this process started before several of you were on the board. So just to give a brief recap, the first time we really started talking about this was in 2016. We kind of mentioned it as an aside of the Board of Education, but work didn't start in earnest until about 2017, when we formed our first Facilities Committee to really take an in-depth look at the way our facilities function and what our current and future needs would be. So that was five years ago. That committee worked together for the better part of a year, more than a year, and established some recommendations in terms of what were clear and urgent priorities for facilities in the school district. But in so doing, realized that there were a lot of projects that were puzzle pieces of a larger picture that we couldn't quite fit together. And we were afraid that if we moved forward the plan as it was, without more professional assistance, namely architects, that we could throw good money after bad, where we could get projects out of sequence or work on certain aspects of our buildings, knowing that other work would have to happen, and we might actually have to tear down some of the improvements that we made to actually correct the larger hole. So, of course, after that recommendation, the Board of Education agreed to hire professional architects to do a real holistic approach to a master facilities plan. That started in 2018. It really started in earnest in 2019, and we formed another committee of citizens that took a deeper look at this, at our needs, took looks at programmatic needs in terms of how we use spaces today, what enrollment trends would be, how we might use spaces tomorrow, how much space we would actually need to do these sorts of things, and what was working, what wasn't working, and really related it to the educational needs of the district, not just here is the current condition of our actual facilities. So what we did come out of that plan, we basically realized that the master facilities plans, did want in fact operate eight, continue to operate eight schools. Despite declining enrollments, it makes sense as a community, continue to operate six elementary schools, one middle school, one high school. But also looking at those facilities, the condition of four of them, where we're not as good as we would have otherwise have liked. They certainly were in poor to fair condition, need extensive work. And to make them meet our current and future needs, we would have to, in many, more likely than not, actually tear them down and rebuild them. So, and looking at that, we started looking at funding sources and options, and looking at what money was available to us to actually carry out that plan. And we realized that, you know, there was different approaches. There's option A, which is, we would let the property taxes go down because the bond levy that we have that are currently paying for our facilities would expire. And the board has no choice about that, without passing another referendum, which means that we'd probably have something in the order of about $40 million to put toward our facilities over the course of five years, which is not nearly enough compared to what we identified in terms of needs. We looked at option B, which would theoretically generate about $180 million of money toward those improvements, but would continue the tax. So taxes would continue forward for another 20 years at the current bond and interest rates. And that would get the vast majority, and I wouldn't say vast, but the majority of the work done that we wanted to in the next five years. And we looked at option C, which would generate something about $250 million that would do the vast majority of that work that we had identified, but would increase taxes by 50% over our current bond and interest levy. So it wouldn't increase the total tax rate 50%, but the bond and interest. So it wouldn't increase the total tax rate 50%, but the bond and interest portion of that tax rate. So that brings us to our results and recommendations from community engagement. So having considered those, that plan, and the funding options for it, we went back to the community and said, hey, you know, what are the expectations in terms of what we want as Batavians for our schools, and what are we willing to pay for? And I'll let Lisa give you a description of the results of it.
Right, I know that this is such a big decision for the board, and you've been elected by the people, and you have no intention of putting something on a ballot that the community does not want. So there, you have to be, think big when you think about getting that feedback. And so we did have a consultant help us with this, who has this expertise, and put together a citizen committee, and there was a BEA member on that committee that was the one staff member, and then Tony and I and Mark served as advisors, and Holly as well, to do whatever work needed to be done behind the scenes, just to get the tasks done. But really, it was a committee of citizens, and their job was to get as many people talking about this as possible, and they presented this to you, so I'm not going to repeat everything that they said, they just were here last month, but what they, you know, what went out were emails, several revisions to the website, social media, not only ours, but Holly got all other different, the Batavia Women's Club, the Rotary Club, Batavia Main Street, the Chamber of Commerce, the City of Batavia, all these people are retweeting our information. We went and spoke at the city council, we got, the committee members went and emailed everybody that they knew, and so they made phone calls. We had principals make phone calls, we had direct mail, we had the Batavia magazine that goes in your mailbox, the Batavian, VATV, signs and banners. We did literally everything we could think of in order for you to hear from the most number of people. Does that mean everybody engaged? No. Does that mean everybody heard these things? No, they didn't. We heard from a couple that said, I never knew any of this was going on. We had a lot of these things, and so I would, we heard it from a couple of people, and I said, well, what could we do differently to make sure that we reach you? So one recommendation from the committee was to make sure whatever we do moving forward, it's that big of an effort, keep going and keep engaging. So they said there will need to be a lot of communication about whatever it is that you decide, and the committee of citizens took all the information from the open houses, from the community engagement sessions that were interactive, and from the survey, and they met, and they discussed, and they deliberated, and they said that you should, their recommendation is that you would put option B on a ballot. And there's a lot of information in that report that they gave you as far as what is the community thinking about the districts and about what the role is of school and the community, not just which option. It wasn't that easy of a survey, it was pretty complex, and the survey was adjusted statistically to make sure it represented the whole community, the whole school district. So even though, well, women took the survey more than men, so 71% of the respondents were female, but what the statisticians do is they correct for that and make sure that those scores are not weighted as much as scores of the people in different bands when they took the survey. So what you're seeing is their best guess of how Batavia, if everybody in Batavia respond, in the Batavia School District responded, how they would have answered. And so, yeah, they recommend that you are very clear with the community about the state of the economy, and that we can't give you a project list because we don't know when things go out for bid, or the bond market at the time we sell those bonds. So they're, what they're saying is make sure you're very clear about that with the community, don't overpromise, but they did recommend option B.
Oh, move.
I don't think we're there yet.
I second.
So the timeline, is that Tony? Because that is my.
I think there are a couple logistics that Tony can go over. I'm accidentally moving the agenda as we're talking, sorry. There were a couple of things, I don't know if you noticed that, but, sorry, that was me. Tony, you have the rest?
Sure. The one thing I want to caution is that option B, as it existed and what we've contemplated up till now, needs to change as a result of what's going on in the economy. Is that the bond market has increased dramatically quickly compared to where it was. It's talked about this. And so that limits, just like when you go and you buy a house and interest rates go up, you can't necessarily buy as much a house as you otherwise would have. The same thing happens with bonds. And the other factor is, is that, you know, with the lumber prices increasing and other construction inflation costs increasing, you're not going to get, you're not going to be able to build as big of a house either. And so those two factors are significantly changing the scope of what we can accomplish with the money that we have available. Frankly, the money just doesn't go as far under these economic conditions. And that's the way the economy is today. Now, who knows what the economy will be like when we actually issue these bonds, and that will change the plan to some degree. It could be better, it could be worse. Maybe we'll be in a recession and the interest rates will come down, and maybe even construction costs will come down. It's very difficult to say. But either, in either case, it's time to move forward. We, our bonds are expiring in 2025. The opportunities you have to pass a question, or ask a question of the community, and have that timing such that the taxes wouldn't go down is either in November of 2022 or April of '23. All indications are your best opportunity to pass this question are in November of '22. And to do that, to put that question on a ballot, you'll have to actually pass a resolution to do so in July. So in a month from now, you'll have to make that decision to put the question on the ballot, basically.
Can I just ask a quick question? How confident are we that we can do the necessary work? That is, you know, the emergency stuff, like roofs, things like that, with the money that we'll have with option B, even if costs are increased? I mean, obviously, we won't be able to do anything that we would like to do, but I assume that it will at least give us the ability to do the things that we really need to do that we've been putting off.
Our first objective, obviously, is to keep our students and staff warm and safe and dry. And yes, that, we'll absolutely do that. We just won't be able to do as much of it. The other things that we want to do is improve spaces for educational needs, in particular our special education spaces. They are more often than not in less than desirable areas of the building or areas of the building that are not designed for their programmatic needs. And then other programmatic needs for electives, you know, building trades at the high school as examples, our libraries, collaborative spaces, those sorts of things, those will have to be scaled down with the money and the inflationary costs that we face.
I would also assume that with this inflationary pressure, that if we do nothing, the amount that we're able to do with the little money that we would have left is going to be even worse, so.
The longer you wait, the worse it gets.
I mean, so, yeah, so the option of doing nothing actually looks worse in this scenario. So people may say, hey, you might want to put it off, but I think that might actually put us in an even worse situation, because the thought that we thought we would be able to do with option one also scales back significantly.
Well, that's what I'd say, yeah, Chris brings up a good point, that when the economy tanked in 2006, that's exactly what we did, part of the reason why we're in the situation we're in now.
Yeah, your buying power for both drops.
Exactly.
And so all the things that people thought we might be able to do, we can do about half of, let's say.
Right.
But at least we can accomplish more. The other thing is, the, and this is my opinion from what I've seen in the past, because I do these things occasionally, is if the bonds fall off and you decide to wait, your opportunity or ability to bring it back to the table becomes exponentially more difficult. So, you know, from a board perspective, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, right? You know? And so you try to do the best you can at a certain point. That's the position I'm taking, and I'm looking at it. So.
So at our next meeting, the resolution will be on the agenda, I'm assuming. We will have a discussion, and we will choose either to pass that resolution or not.
Yes. So all indications are, from, I'm gathering from the conversation that you're having, is that something indeed you want to move forward with? And if that's the case. Craft a question and a more definitive financial plan and up then, and be ready for you in July, and simultaneously begin to figure out how we can continue to get the word out when it comes to information about this potential referendum. As, you know, when you pass this question in July, people will see it on the ballot, of course, in November. That's not, that's not a lot of time.
At the next meeting, can you put on the topic, and this is for everybody to kind of agree or not, what is the role of the district and the board from that point forward?
So that it's clear.
So educational, you know, what can we do to help put that information out, and what are we allowed to do as board members as opposed to private citizens?
Certainly, we can include that.
Yeah, I think that's a really good discussion, just because there can be confusion on that.
Confusion, and you can trip up a process that can make it very difficult for everyone.
I've got three questions for Tony. I already said I'd want to hear one more time. I'll be brief soon. But.
It's okay, I'm on vacation.
Option B allows us to move forward with our operational goals, which include safety, security, and control of all buildings.
The assumption is, however, under option B, as we've discussed extensively, that we would demolish and rebuild Louise White and H.C. Storm schools.
I bring it up because for me, everything that's been going on, world security has been, I think, on all of our minds, and so that's something that's very important to me, and I know that B encompasses making our buildings more robust in that manner.
Simultaneously, though, I would add, and I should have probably added earlier under that budget, is I, the board may want to consider increasing spending on the capital projects budget in fiscal '23, so that they can address more of the safety and security needs, in particular at Alice Gustafson and J.B. Nelson schools.
Even before we, so separate.
Because as we identified in that master plan, is those schools ought to be decommissioned. Unfortunately, financially, that's not going to happen, at least not in the foreseeable future. And because that's the case, we have some renovations to, I would say, moderate to major renovations to those schools to bring them up to security standards that we expect everywhere.
So is that something that would come from RAC or Capital Projects?
Yes. A little, yes, yeah. The answer to that is yes.
So will you bring us a recommendation from them as to what shifting we should do and what projects that should encompass in the?
Yes, and if you are considering that along with, and you do pass this resolution for this referendum question, we would move quickly on that, because we would want to get those projects out to bid this fall, late fall, early winter, so that they could start next summer, as soon as school's out.
So when would you bring that one, that part to us, the budget capital projects increase?
I certainly could bring that to you in July.
Well, why don't you? It would just make sense.
Yep.
Yes?
And then the other components of that would follow quickly thereafter.
Okay.
And the other two parts I had were.
Oh, wait, you did not say there was a two-part question.
I have a three-part.
He said three questions.
He said the other two parts.
I keep interrupting him, I'm sorry.
That's all right. This is, I'll be interested how you answer this question, but, you know, we just talked about the budget. In general, in general, relative to past years, the district is in a relatively strong financial position right now, healthy position, I should say.
Yes.
And part of that is because we made certain sacrifices on capital projects. That was a component of it.
That was, yes.
Is that fair statement? Okay. And that B, if that's one that we're considering, I'm just going to read from the Bafta conditions, would allow us to live within our, within our means as a district. Now, we know that things are changing, and, you know, we might not get as much for money as we were hoping we would get, but that's accurate statement.
Yeah. Those are all accurate statements. Yes, I would say to add.
Well, then, this last one, Lisa asked, but, I mean, based off canvassing all Holly's hard work, the feedback we've gotten that there is support in the community for B at this time.
Yeah, that was the whole.
He's confirming. And I just have one last quick thing. The writing of the actual verbiage, that's pretty much automatically happens by the lawyers. We really can't change any of that.
I don't even want to get involved.
Well, right. For the people who are watching, it may seem weird that we see and approve.
Fair enough.
The question one time, but that's because we really aren't the experts, and we can't understand.
And it isn't just written by the lawyers because they feel like it in a certain way. It is prescribed by law.
Right, okay.
As to how the question looks, there are certain components that they can change, but there's a lot of it that's prescribed by law, and sometimes it just feels awkward to the average voter. And so oftentimes, that question has to be explained to the voters, and that's one of the key components of helping people understand, like, what does this question mean, and what does it mean for my pocketbook? What does it mean for my child's school? And what does it mean for us as a community? But they are very awkward questions.
I've also seen situations where people write for the construction of a new school building, and they thought they could add furnishings as a part of that, and it wasn't written that way, so then they couldn't use the bond money for furnishings.
Which, which is why.
Which is a big scary problem that you might be running into.
And I wanted to explain to the audience that they understand that we're, although we're seeing it for the first time, we understand the concept, and it's all legalese and.
Right, we won't pick apart the verb, Angel.
Exactly.
Good point, Chris. All right, so Tony, you're going to bring us those recommendations for the Capital Projects group, and you're going to include the question, the resolution on the next agenda.
And I will also include kind of the do's and don'ts of what we can say and what we can't say.
Yes, thank you.
In terms of properizing that question.
All right. Any other questions on that? All right, final item on our agenda tonight is talking about an executive search firm.
Yes, this is my 10th year of superintendency, starting this school year, and I am retiring at the end of that school year. Please hold your applause.
Super thrilled.
Right, right. So I, it's time for you to. Invoke board member 101, which is you get to hire one person.
Yes.
In the entire organization, everybody who's here, you get to pick one person, and that is what you will be doing during this school year. I, it is not something that you can, most schools do, most school districts do without the help of some expertise, because if you just interviewed 10 different candidates, everybody has a different idea of what they would want, and you're supposed to be representing what this community wants and what the staff wants. So a search firm could do things like hold focus groups and get some information from all your different stakeholder groups, give that to you, so that's the way that people have voice in the process, among other options. What I did for you is pulled some proposals from different search firms. One of them is your IASB, so the Illinois Association of School Boards. They do a lot of work, not as much local as the other three organizations. The other three, one of them you used 10 years ago when you hired me, that would be School Exec Connect. One of them is, and the other two are being used currently by local districts. We do have a high turnover of superintendents in King County. Between the last two years and the upcoming year or two, you'll see about two-thirds of the superintendent's turnover. And so those other two firms, HYA and Rain Associates, are being used locally right now with two neighboring districts. And they are all willing to come out and interview. This needs to be a public discussion and public interview. I would say four might be a lot to bring in, and we do want to negotiate and look really closely at their proposals and say, well, I like this, but I don't like this, we don't need these services, and you can add and remove. And so it'd be hard to do those with four all at the same time. So I'm going to stop talking, because this is really your decision, but that would be my recommendation, that you give me some parameters to go and talk with one or two of them and invite them back for a face-to-face interview with you guys.
Can we do a face-to-face interview in a?
Open session, yep.
So I would like to put out there that I would like to hear from at least two, an interview of two. I'm a person that's occasionally in a position, it does no service to say, I can't even break it down to two of this group. So I would like to say two.
You guys okay with that?
Yes.
You want to narrow it down to two?
Narrow it down to two.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I would agree with that.
I know Lisa shared all of this with us. I will be completely frank that while I was out of the country, I did not read all of the, but I don't know if other people had a chance to, and if you have some leanings as to where you are thinking, we could sort of tally it down.
So Sue just said her top two.
Okay, did you write this down? All right.
I'm very passionate about my.
Oh, wait, who are yours?
I actually just have one.
Who?
The School Exec Connects.
Okay.
So Sue said HYA and School Exec Connects. So Sue said HYA and School Exec Connect.
I wonder why they didn't, I didn't see Batavia as a reference.
Who?
It wa- it was, um, ten years, ten years ago.
With our current champion.
I mean, that is bad marketing, isn't it?
Like, step one, hey, do you remember? We hired Lisa. Like, that should have been the proposal.
Victory.
Might not, might not, it's, it's dangerous.
That was actually really nice to interrupt, I said that. Uh, did you have any preferred?
Is HYA printed out?
Yeah.
Yeah, right here.
Oh, thank you. That was the one that, um, referred St. Charles?
Yes, they just did the St. Charles search, yes.
Okay. I have heard a, a good amount of negative feedback about that individual. I don't know how much it impacts this.
About that search firm or the superintendent? Oh, yay, thank you.
Just throwing it out there.
So which, HYA?
He was talking about the superintendent, not the search.
Yeah, I heard, I heard good feedback about the search firm.
From the community.
Well, from people that hired them.
Don't they have a warranty so that if?
Yeah.
Craig, did you have thoughts?
Um, my generalized thoughts are, one, that, um, I, I really appreciate kind of how School Exec broke down the information and presented it in a very clear visual way. As opposed, because that helps people like us who may not be in the process to understand and parse the data. As opposed to, uh, at least one of the others that, I, my head was hurting.
Same thing.
I was, I was trying to read through it. So that, that kind of bothered me about that. Um, my opinion of my two would be HYA and S- School Exec Connect.
If I had to pick a second, I would pick,
Forcing you to.
I would pick the HYA.
Yeah.
I think part of my-
I think we're gonna have a consensus.
Part of my HYA is I actually-
I have the same two also.
Um, so then my question is, timing and, um, paring it down to figure out what we actually want from them, as Lisa mentioned, um,
So they, they give you like, here's everything we could offer.
Right.
So maybe the next step would be the interview. Everybody look really closely at those two, highlight the things they like and maybe want to subtract. But once, after the interview, then we just really focus in on one of them and, and do that negotiating of, we don't want this, we do want that.
And just figure out.
I guess I wrote it wrong, maybe. That fee, regardless of what-
They said in their thing they'll match any offer.
Right.
Yeah.
But I thought it was, you got everything for this ex-
Yeah, and they, they said they would match any comparable offer, so.
Right. So what am, why would I take stuff away if it's still gonna cost me?
Got you.
I would-
Do you know what I mean?
But I'm assuming if we took stuff away from someone else, that would lower their bid.
The other one's about the same.
Right, but if we took services away, couldn't we negotiate and say, well, we don't need this, so.
Right, no, I mean, I, I get that.
Tough negotiator, Sue.
Oh, I could-
They all look like they're in the right area where we just want-
Oh, yeah, they were all, they were all pretty equitable.
Love everything's best, yeah.
Okay.
No, that's what I'm just saying.
So are we talking, inviting them back to the next meeting because we would like to get this ball rolling? It is Superintendent Hiring season.
It is Superintendent Hiring season. Yeah, I would, um, do you want to do a five o'clock workshop or just during the regular?
I would actually prefer to, if we could do a workshop.
Workshop.
Five o'clock? Workshop, workshop?
RJ, sorry.
Not just because you feed us.
Well, I didn't hear, did I hear from Chris and Aaron about-
We, we all had, we all had-
Okay, 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 thank you.
All right, so workshop, next meeting.
Yeah, nineteen.
Let's just make a day of it.
I will see if they are available at that time.
All right, perfect.
Do we want to consider possibly adding a second meeting at, I mean, either for July or August?
I'm here.
I am open to that. I mean, just, I, I just know we have a lot of stuff on our plate and end of the summer, it's a little less pressure.
I would be more towards August.
So perhaps if we, you know, if there's some stuff that we want to get to, consider it. I mean, I'm not saying that we have to decide right then now, but are we open to the idea?
I think there's a logic at the July meeting of doing a work session for the interview and then having a follow-up work session in August to discuss our final selections.
Cause I also know that we had the meeting before this where we were talking about other stuff that we wanted to discuss too, so that's why I'm saying we may want to throw a different one in there and we normally do a training during the summer anyway, so perhaps that's the training.
But I, yeah, but I would argue too, uh, August does work better because then I'm back at work and July is gonna be a little muddy.
Yeah, I'm fine with August, I do.
Yeah, I think August is right.
August for the decision?
No, no, so we'll make the decision.
Oh, a different workshop in August.
Yeah, so-
We're gonna try to do this in July.
July, we're gonna do our workshop, decide on, and do our interviews for-
July is interviews and, got it.
Yeah.
I think to do our due diligence, we have to make this decision ASAP.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and then you can approve the contract in August, but we can start doing some of the groundwork with whoever you said, you know.
Whoever selects.
Whoever you select.
All right. Any other questions on that topic? All right, then we're gonna move to, uh, superintendent comments.
I, um, wow, yeah. Kathy Scafeedi doesn't like Spotlight, but thank you for putting all this together and every couple of weeks and everything you do in between for them. I know that they, we all very much appreciate what you do for the board meetings. And-
And Cindy, we love you, but you got big shoes to fill.
Yeah, and that's it for me.
All right, start down with Aaron.
Um, I just would like to add to our state champion, some unsung heroes and it's the parents.
Oh, God, yeah.
I mean, Chris, Craig, several other of us up here, it, it, those parents are out there driving their kids to all of these practices at all hours of the day, all kinds of temperatures and weather and I just would like to express a little appreciation for their efforts because we couldn't do it without them. So as, as, maybe silly as that seem, I really do appreciate all of their efforts in making our students successful. And that's all I have tonight.
Thanks, Aaron, RJ.
I like to appreciate Aaron's appreciation of you all.
Very nice of you, so thank you. I think this is really neat. I was so excited about this. So thank you to the state track team for, state track team, the state champs for thanking us for this, because I know I had little to nothing to do with that, but that's, that's really neat. And I don't know, graduation was amazing, so I hope all the graduates are enjoying their summer so far. It sounds like they're all, a lot of them are already doing things and working or going to school. I can't believe they're going to summer or camps and things already, so that's amazing and, um, I'm really looking forward to the next couple of meetings that we're having because we're really starting to dig in and get some stuff done, so.
It's exciting.
Yeah, it is. That's all.
Thanks.
Craig.
Obviously, congrats to, you know, everybody that was involved in the state championship, parents and everybody else. I, one takeaway I had is just like, you know, I'm not involved in track or running unless something's chasing me and it doesn't happen nearly enough. So it is, you know, you always think about it from my perspective as like an individualized effort, right? You know, I'm running for this medal or whatever else. It really was refreshing and, and interesting for me to hear about how really everybody put themselves aside over the team.
Yeah.
You know, and, and kudos to the coaches and everybody involved that worked whatever math and metric they had to understand that certain sacrifices might move them ahead than others. You know, to, and to educate the, uh, team, which they probably already knew that this is their goal and this is how you achieve that goal. You know, you win the war, not the battle, kind of thing.
That's why you have a math teacher be the track.
Nah, I gotcha. Um, and then, you know, just as, as was said earlier, you know, it, summer might seem like time off. There's a lot of teachers doing work to help students do things and, and, you know, literally, they're trying something new on the marching band this year and starting it again because just about half the band are incoming freshmen.
Oh, wow.
This year for the marching band.
That's cool.
So it's great, it's fantastic. So to everybody and all the teachers that are working with kids on things over the summer, thank you. You know, for all the parents that are driving them back and forth to those things, thank you, so. And I just want to say, I appreciate the discussion for the work session we had earlier. Fantastic. It was very, um, discussion oriented and it was refreshing to see, so thank you.
Hey, thanks, Craig. Sue.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Todd.
Uh, I'll be brief, but echo what everybody said. Uh, the meeting we had before this meeting was exceptional. I'm excited about the progress we're gonna make. Having the track team here was, again, I did get goosebumps and just, I think we can learn a lot from those kids as a community, so we're proud of that and I agree, this is unexpected but very cool. And, um, I'm also very excited about the work we're doing. I feel like we're really moving forward here and it's, um, for a while there I felt we're moving slow. Now we're really making giant steps forward, so that's very exciting, so I'm looking forward to the decisions ahead. And then again, Kathy, I know it's been brief, I've worked with you, but I really appreciate it, so thank you for all you did. And Cindy, we're looking forward to getting to know you and working with you, so thank you.
I will keep it short and sweet. Thank you, everybody. I am just very happy to be a Batavian and that we're all working together. I feel like we're a team, so, thank you.
Can I have one more thing updated? Todd, I want to tell you how excited I am about your new opportunity to coach here because to me, it takes two things that are so very important to not only me personally, but the rest of the board, as well as our community, and brings them together in such an important impactful way. And I want to thank you for putting Batavia on the map in your leadership and, in those efforts, so, um, I didn't want to forget and please don't take my looping back as anything like that, but I'm, I'm thrilled for you. Thank you for representing us in that way.
And going last, there's never anything good I can add, so I'm just going to say, uh, that is everything that we had on our agenda for tonight, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Move by Meadows, second by Mike Sert.
Long day.
It's nap time.
Day.
Give her a eye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. I should literally-